All right, good evening. I will call to order this committal whole meeting for April twenty seventh, twenty twenty one. Can I get a motion that the agenda for the April twenty seventh, twenty twenty one committal will be adopted as presented? Counselor Sharnard makes that motion?
Hi, Mr. Chair, I think it has is as amended, so we did have the sundry item. It was added today.
Just making sure I'm looking at three, three, okay. As amended.
I'll accept the friendly amendment.
Thank you very much. Any questions or concerns? All in favor? Great, thank you. Can I get a motion that the sorry, that the minutes of the April thirteenth, twenty twenty one committal will be adopted as presented? Counselor Wilkinson makes that motion. Any questions or concerns? All in favor? Motion carried. We have no delegations. Reports from staff, we have executive office with council reimbursement for child expect childcare expenses.
Mayor Sorensen, I can take that one.
Great, thank you.
So this was a item that came up at one of our strategic planning sessions and council wanted a little bit more information. As to what other municipalities do and whether other municipalities provide this for their counselors. So there were a few. They all have varying ways of administering it. Some of it is just reasonable expenses. They don't set a cap, some set a cap on it, reasonable except expenses up to two thousand. Some cover for mostly all council events, conferences, meetings, et cetera, and some are just the council and committee meetings. So we had Colin, our HR manager, reach out to his group and send out an email. And so these were a majority of the responses that we received. With twenty six responded that they don't yet provide that to their council. So and just leave that for this committee's discussion on their thoughts.
All right, open the floor to comments or questions. Counselor Curry.
Thank you to admin for bringing this forward. I'm really excited to see that there are a lot of forward-thinking counselors councils out there that are already doing this. I would definitely like to see us do one of these. One of the many options we have here. I'm not partial to anyone particularly. But I do think it's a really important part of having a diverse council. And also the difference between losing pay versus paying to be here. We all lose pay to be here. We don't all pay to be here. There's a substantial difference. So, thank you.
Counselor Byer.
Thanks through the chair to council. It was interesting reading this, knowing that different municipalities can do different ways. I just want to share my perspective since I am one on council that does have to pay for childcare. This is something I've tracked for several years, basically just for my own monthly budgeting purposes. And just for your informational purposes, I would spend anywhere between two hundred and four hundred dollars a month on childcare directly related to council functions. And I realize that some municipalities mention that getting a tech or a receipt for that, and I certainly see the value in that. Generally, I use babysitters because that's what's available in the evenings. And in the daytime, I would use the daycares that would allow for a a, you know, just for the day or something, right? If you don't have full-time daycare, then you know, the prices are a little bit more than if you're signed up for the monthly plan. And I would be in favor of this. But I wouldn't, because I do see the value in having people that are parents and have to have childcare available. But I wouldn't want to see anything approved, you know, until after the election or, sorry, that wouldn't come forward until after the election or for the next calendar year. My thoughts are a cap is necessary as well. And absolutely having receipts is also essential. And if there's any way, I don't know how something like this would get broken up financially with a year-end thing. I know childcare can be claimed through taxes. I wasn't claiming mine for the babysitters because I was not collecting receipts, but I'm wondering how that would look. I'm not sure if Ms. Parsons would know how that would affect someone's taxes, like the T-Force at the end. If there's any way that they receive that income back, I just, I would just want to make sure that there wasn't a way to double dip. That's all I would comment on that. So those are my thoughts.
Counselor Sharnard.
Hi, through to the chair, reading through this, the part I don't like. I have no problem saying that if we want to put in the claim for extra expenses. I don't like the idea that we pinpoint calling it childcare. I would be more in favor of a motion saying expenses reoccurring. But when I look at this, I, I agree with Counselor Byer's comment. It's kind of like voting a raise to the next council, so that the end of your term, if you feel there should have been a raise, you vote it to the next council. Looking at the seven of us in the room, we are very diverse group. I do appreciate that. But I have to think of it from the other point of view. Prior to running for council, you must look at, yes, we all lose, we lose out on holidays, there's extra expenses that are incurred. We are paid twenty-two hundred dollars a month. But I do, I don't look at this as how much money can I make being a counselor? I re, I personally view this as I ran for council and intend to run again. Is what can I do to make my town a better place? And getting twenty-two hundred dollars a month does compensate for expenses that we do incur. When we go away to conferences, we are not out of pocket. I do appreciate some of the people, if you got to pay childcare. Where I terminate that, I don't like that. I'd just rather have extra expenses, but we are reimbursed. I would encourage, so when I look at it, a total of twenty-eight hundred dollars maximum that maybe we should consider where council has reviewed what we're paid per month. If we consider that that would be a two hundred dollar increase, I'd be more in favor of saying we increase our wages. Voting it in for the next council coming up. So that means usually as the outgoing council, they would, they would put in a raise for next council. That way, the public has a fair chance to say this council voted themselves a raise, but for the next council, then the voting public. So I do agree that, you know, we're at twenty-two and I've seen major increases from when I first ran for council, we weren't anywhere near this, but the costs are going up. So I wouldn't be in favor of a motion saying we're increasing for childcare only. I think that is unfair. So anyone thinking that may apply for this would be subject to that stuff. So a motion with simply saying for added expenses, or we just simply say in respect to, because I would encourage all people to run. I don't want any barriers, but we must remember when you run for council, you are losing out on holidays, loss and pay. But that's why we get the twenty-two hundred dollars per month to reimburse this for losses. So that's my viewpoint on it.
Thank you. Any, all right, Counselor Curry.
Through the chair to Counselor Sharnard. What do you mean added expenses? What other, like if you're saying a motion for any added expenses? What additional added expenses do we have that we're not already reimbursed for? Other than childcare?
Counselor Sharnard.
Okay, I reimburse, well, where it says, where the motion comes forward, it says childcare or loss of regular wage. I'm reading what the page says, so an added expense could be a simple thing. Because you're at a council meeting, your job, let's say, entitled you, you only get two, three weeks of holidays, you've used them up. So in a lot of cases, some of the businesses may say, because you're going away at a meeting, you have taken too much time off work. So therefore, you're going to lose wages. So I'm just reading what's here. It says added expenses as childcare or loss of income. So loss of income for some people in a busy year, when we used to do the meetings earlier in the day. So when we started at five o'clock, which week, we corrected that. But what if your job that you're working at would normally have a shift that would work into, into your council meeting? So you don't want it to be a barrier to say, because I worked to seven o'clock at night, I can't run for council because I'm going to lose wages. So depending on your job, so I'm only quoting what's here. It says childcare or loss of wages, which would be just as fair. It's an added expense.
Ms. Parsons, you heard your hand up?
I was, thank you through the chair. I was just going to respond to Counselor Byer's comment about the taxable. Whether or not it be taxable and being able to track that. And I can follow up with our CFO on that. It might end up being taxable on your checks, so it might balance out that way. But I can definitely look into something like that. And also the comment on the max, setting a maximum. I think that that would be recommendable just for budgeting purposes. Make, making it easier to set that municipal budget every year. But that obviously is at council's discretion.
Counselor Wilkinson.
Yes, through the chair, I think for other expenses, you could have elder care as well if you were in charge of looking after a senior in your home. I don't know kennels. If you go to a conference, I just don't know where it is. And on a financial note, like, I do see ourselves sort of as a volunteer who gets some compensation. I also see our firemen in town here as volunteers who get some compensation. Do they get paid for their childcare expenses? And should they? Like, this is something we'd have to look into to make sure it is fair for all aspects of all town employees.
Anyone else? Counselor Bevan.
Yeah, I guess I have a hard time with this here. I know council voted themselves a raise here last year. We also voted in to get ourselves a five hundred dollar clothing allowance, so on and so forth. If you can't make ends meet when you're making twenty-four thousand dollars a year, you've got to spend four or five thousand dollars on childcare or whatever and that during out the day. There's daycares in here, you can drop off for five hours a day, six hours a day, whatever, for a certain rate or whatever. And if you've got meetings and that, you usually have your sitters that you're going to use anyway. Or your significant others or grandparents or whatever and stuff like that. And I think just for us, this is not the way to go. I don't know how much more we want our residents to pay out to us and that. I don't think this council has a job. I, I think it's a privilege to be able to sit on council and that the residents elected me to be here. I do my best to do the best for the town or anything coming in. And as I said before, that I would sit on council even though I wasn't getting paid. The reason I didn't sit on council before is my job would not allow me to sit on it. I would miss a couple of meetings here and there every month and that, and that wasn't fair to the, to the residents of our town here and that and stuff. So I'm not, I'm not in favor of this at all. I think, you know, we can put our money other places and that. And just to say that most people don't run when you talk to them is that because the jobs will not let them to run or the bosses won't let them to run or whatever. Very few are saying is because I have kids and that. I was a single parent. I raised my kids too and that. And I worked two or three jobs and make ends meet and that. And I knew what I could run for, what I couldn't run for, and what I could volunteer for and what I couldn't volunteer for. So if you do the homework, you know what you can do. You know what our council is doing and that, and what meetings are in town, out of town. You go out of town, you get paid for everything. You do not lose any money unless you want to spend extra on yourselves and that. So I just don't, I don't agree.
Mayor Zahara.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I would like to address a couple of things that Counselor Bevan has brought up because they are incorrect. We do not give ourselves a five hundred dollar allowance. We basically moved it out of our budget as an overall expense to give everybody a specific allocation. So I don't like the connotation that we gave ourselves something extra that wasn't already there, that was already a part of the budget. Just how we administer it is different. And also, when we do meet out of town, many of us lose wages, lose holiday time, lose family time. What have you. So there's certainly expenses that are incurred, whoever is around this table. I think the, I think a couple of interesting points that have been brought up here is, you know, elder care. That, that's something that should be also considered because there are people that are helping out their parents or loved ones that that could be a barrier for them to join council. Counselor Bevan spoke to, one of the reasons he didn't run is because his job wouldn't allow him. That was a barrier. And we need to try to remove barriers as much as we can. That is financially prudent. And so we do have the diverse council. We're very fortunate. We do have a very diverse council from different backgrounds, different perspectives. And that's one of the things I really appreciate about this group. But there has to be, as Counselor Bevan pointed out, a balance there because you should be doing this because you want to do it for the best interest of the community and not for financial compensation. So what is that right balance? I don't know. I don't know. The one that's talked about here is if you miss expenses for other than childcare, which, which community was that? Oh, regular wages and childcare. So I think that was town of Okeechobee. I don't know what their compensation structure is. Some communities, you're paid per meeting or paid per day. So you're actually generating revenue, so that would offset that. We're not. We are a salary-based, so if you do attend more things, you know, there could certainly be additional expenses. If we do move forward with something like this, I do think there needs to be cap and there needs to be receipts available. And it's up to individual members of council to decide whether or not to submit. Some may choose not to, some may choose to take advantage of that, but we should be trying to remove those barriers, whether that's childcare, elder care. Things for like, I think Counselor Wilkinson brought up the volunteer fire department. That's a little bit different because they are responding. It's not something you can plan ahead. But it's something that we need to also consider is where, where's that fairness and where's that fine line? And if we're talking about overall compensation, once again, yes, we have moderately modestly increased our salaries here based on the data that shows that we are one of the lowest paid. Next term, that will be corrected somewhat. But that's my perspective. I'm not firm one way or the other on this. Because I think there's a lot to be considered here, but I do think we do need to remove barriers. Just what is that balance and making sure that we are still being prudent by, but still allowing for people to be involved in this democratic process.
Okay, I'll give my two cents and then we'll go to Counselor Sharnard. I agree with a lot with, that's been said around the table. I would be in favor of something around the twenty-four hundred dollar per year mark that would cover out-of-pocket expenses. I think it's important that we use an annual number, not a monthly number, just so that people can use them when it's more appropriate because during summer months, we might not have many meetings. And then in other months, we'll have tons of meetings and conferences, and so it'd be more appropriate to use it on an annual basis rather than a monthly basis. I, I, I agree that there could be other issues that we're not dealing with, like elder care or perhaps even kennels. So perhaps leaving it as flexible as out-of-pocket expenses. But I do, I do believe that our current remuneration covers are out-of-pocket revenues. So if you lose, if we're losing pay because we're at one of these council meetings, I believe that's what our remuneration is for. But what, what we could work on is the expense claims and, and out-of-pocket expenses. So, and I, I do believe that this is a barrier for single parents running in the upcoming elections. So I think it, it's important for us to remove as many barriers as we can for democracy. And I agree that we shouldn't have this. I agree that it should be effective in October with a new council. All right, we'll go to Counselor Sharnard.
Just through the chair, actually, the mayor brought up an interesting point, but we have to remember at one time we were paid per meeting. So an example, a council meeting, we were paid one hundred dollars to do a meeting. So if you have extra expenses comes out of that, and when we go away for the day, we were two fifty a day. What we did is we rounded off to come up with twenty-two hundred. We took all the counselors, divided it up over several years. An average was twenty-two hundred dollars a month. So if we want to fairly compensated, then maybe we have to go back the other way, put a base salary in and paid for a meeting. Because going twenty-two hundred made too much sense. So during the summer months, we are paid more, and as a rule, we're not doing any meetings. Some of the times we do more meetings, so we took an average. So my thing is the twenty-two hundred, we're paid now. Repeat myself, if we feel it should be a raise, appearing around the table, everyone's agreeing that if we do. But I, again, like even when I relook at this, when we're putting in claims, I don't want to see a claim get in. So it's causes a grief. We brought up very interesting stuff that affects all of us. Could be seniors' care, could be kennel care, because people that have animals, they love their animals just as much. It's an expense, childcare. I don't want it pinpointed. We could leave something in there for a special meeting. So if all of a sudden a disaster happens in our town and all of us have to, whatever reason, spend three, four days away from work or something. So we could leave something in for special cases, there's an extra cost. But if we seriously want to look at increasing wages, let's do it come out, October. But we are paid a salary and some months we have more meetings, some months we have less. So when we are going out of town and I'm looking in the room, and I too was a single parent once. I many years wanted to run for council. My career, my job did not fit in. So technically speaking, no matter what we're paying, some people would love to run for council, but the time in their life isn't worth. Looking around this room, looking at it, we got people from various acts, some different ages, different financial things. So I never want to discourage anyone from running, but I don't want to set the carrot out there that people are thinking, hey, this could be a career. Because we are well compensated from the time. The most important thing is we are all, the most valuable thing we have in life is time. Every, all seven of us in this room, we give up time to sit on council. And I would strongly believe all seven of us in this room have a heart and passion for it. We all believe that, I believe we all ran because we care about our town. We want to change it. I don't want it to be a financial thing, but I agree, if you're losing out on holidays and other pay, we should be compensated. So, you know, I think the salary, we could look at it in October and vote ourselves a raise if we feel the next council should have one.
Counselor Curry.
Through the chair, so I would be in support of one of the options where we have a limit on it. So I'm, I agree with that, you know, that roughly twenty-four hundred dollars a year. I agree with what Counselor Sorensen had said is, I think it should be for an amount for the year annual, not for a monthly. Just because we all know, depending on when conferences are and stuff. I'm okay with it being out of expensive or out of pocket and having a little bit more of a list with, you know, childcare, senior care and such. I'm with Counselor Sorensen that I don't think it should be for lost pay. I do agree that that is remuneration and as one of the people working full-time at this table, that's what I chose. So I chose I could do this in my time in life because I give up almost seventy-five percent of my holidays a year. So for four years, I have not had hardly any holidays because this is my passion and I chose it. Sorry, somebody's knocking at my door for the first time ever at a meeting. And so I would be in sport. I knew that when I joined. I chose that. I chose to give up that time. And I would not expect our salary to match that because that would be a substantial raise, a substantial raise for me. I do lose a substantial amount of income if I count my holidays as income. And so I, I would be fully in support though, adding things like the senior care and the out-of-pocket and doing the annual amount.
Counselor Wilkinson and then Counselor Byer. You're muted, Counselor Wilkinson.
I'm sorry. I think we all did give up things to run in council. I have to go part-time and check up with my supervisor. We all do those things. I'd also just like to mention here, it doesn't have to be a single parent that we're talking about that needs this. Could be any parent because your partner could work a shift work and not be able to help with childcare. So let's not just say single parent, please. Thanks.
Thank you for correcting me. I agree with that. Counselor Byer and then, and then Mayor Zahara.
Thanks through the chair to council. I, I wanted to just express that I would be supportive if there was maybe a different wording of the policy instead of calling it childcare expenses, adding it to other expenses that would include things like partner or senior care or something along those lines that was mentioned. I, I think all of us around the table are passionate and anybody that runs for council is passionate. I don't think anybody that I've ever heard of is looking at it for a career or for the paycheck because there's certainly other positions locally that you could make a lot more money at besides council. You know, speaking from experience, there's, there's a lot of other opportunities in Edson if you're looking for, for pay. So I, I think that's just something that is completely off the table, that this is considered a paycheck for people. But, but we are losing our time without a doubt. And, and also it's, council demands a very flexible schedule. There are lots of jobs that this is a completely a barrier because you would never be able to get a day off here, a day off there. The evenings, maybe if you do work shift work, you would have to take the entire day or, or shift off or that timeframe of your work hours in order to attend a meeting, just because of the way that, that they're, you know, the job is set up. So, so absolutely there are barriers and we've tried to change some of those barriers by trying different times of meetings. So I, I commend our council for that, for, for trying different things. And childcare is one of them, whether it's a single parent or a parent, as was just mentioned. There are a lot of shift workers around here and it, you know, childcare happens twenty-four hours a day, not just, you know, when, when there's someone else available. We also have a really transient community, people that their parents aren't here anymore. So I know lots of people that their grandparents aren't ever available. You know, they don't have those other avenues of, of getting those supports. Whether it's for their kids or, or for their partner. So, yeah, I'd be in support of it. And again, with the cap, absolutely a cap for the annual expenses. Thanks.
Mayor Zahara.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I agree with, it's not just for single parents. It's not just for males or not just for females or males. And it may not be elder care, maybe somebody that's disabled or a spouse that might be having some issues where they need, you know, somebody there to, to look after them. So I certainly would like to see something a little bit more flexible in regards to that. I also agree, we are compensated and part of that is we have to take time off work and that's the commitment that you make when you sign up to this. Not every job is going to allow it. I think for most of us, we're, we're very fortunate that we've been, we have employers. I think most of us have or are currently working that have had that flexibility. So I would like to see that and I think too annually with a cap for budgetary purposes. I'm not sold on pets myself, even though I am a pet owner and have to have pets and kennels. I think that might be a little bit too much from my point of view, but certainly loved ones that are at home that may need some care or childcare. I certainly would be supportive of.
Ms. Parsons.
So I feel comfortable that we have enough majority support around the table for administration to bring a draft amendment to the compensation policy to include this within it. You know, something along the lines of family and that dependence of some type. Those type of receded out-of-pocket expenses, so we can bring a draft back for council's review. And I'm aiming for the next term election. Thank you so much.
Excellent, thank you. All right, moving on to infrastructure and planning, we have an energy and efficiency project report. Welcome, Mr. Riome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Counselors, colleagues, Mayor Zahara, I'll just share my screen here so I can pull my presentation up. So, thank you, everyone. Uh, my name is Brendan Reom. I'm the municipal energy coordinator with the town of Edson in infrastructure and planning. And today I'm going to be discussing some greenhouse gas emissions reduction projects that we are investigating at the moment. Through, through my, through myself. So we're going to go over a bit of background. Of where these projects came from and what we've been doing with my position. Um, the emissions reduction targets that we've set. And the progress we've made towards them to, to date. And then we'll dive into a little the, the proposed projects and then the next steps surrounding that. So on to the background. So. As I introduced on February ninth to the committee of the whole, we are, the town of Edson is participating in the municipal energy manager program. Which is facilitated by the municipal climate change action center. So the main goal for the program that we've been looking at is incorporating energy management and sustainability into town operations. And we can do this through developing a made-for-town of Edson energy management policy, which will guide future developments. Of our energy management in our, in our operations, in our buildings, our fleets, et cetera, from there. And we also want to make it unique to capture. The sort of unique state the town of Edson is in terms of being a resource-based economy as well as being too small to be big and too big to be small. And the main point of this program is to mitigate climate change. And we, we did this, we're doing this through achieving a five percent greenhouse gas reduction in each year of the program. However, through discovery in the last six months of work, we've had to make some changes to those targets as we'll go into. So as a baseline, we're using twenty nineteen as a baseline for our emissions in town. So we're looking at seven buildings in our portfolio at the moment. They're the highest energy users in our portfolio and have the most potential. For greenhouse gas emissions reduction. So in twenty nineteen, we, we emitted two thousand one hundred and seventy-nine tons of carbon. From these seven buildings. And it's from there we set our initial emissions reduction of five percent by the end of twenty twenty-one. Now. Oh, we just. Instead of revise those targets to reflect the reality of our building location in the future. So um, large-scale capital projects he, in that building and it. It will be economically feasible. So we've adjusted our emissions reduction target to three percent for that building to reflect that reality. Now, this is to set our new target for a municipality-wide emissions reduction down to three point six percent, which is about seventy-nine tons. Over our baseline from, from twenty nineteen. Now, we've already done some considerable work, working towards that, that goal. So we have implemented fourteen no-cost energy conservation projects on the buildings in that portfolio. And that has achieved a total annual reduction of twenty-two tons. Thus far. So that's about twenty-eight percent of our total target for twenty twenty-one. However, there is still a larger need for, for future projects. And based on the no-cost projects alone, we'll not be sufficient. To achieve our production targets just on those, those alone. So we need to be looking at low-cost projects and potentially. And capital projects in the future to both meet and exceed our targets for twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two in the second year of the program. And if we want to keep the momentum rolling by the end of the municipal energy manager program going forward in the future. So in the past six months of my, my position with the town, I have been able to compile a massive amount of data. About these facilities that I'm working in. I've conducted energy audits on each individual building. I've conducted thermal scans. And through those, that process, I've identified significant risks and concerns in addition to our missions and energy use. So they typically fall, they fall into two categories that I've discovered, both operational and maintenance. In the, on the operational side, I've identified significant amounts of aging and inefficient equipment that is becoming expensive to operate. Expensive to maintain and are in a, is very energy inefficient in the buildings. And on top of that, through that inefficiency, we're also experiencing increasing utility and distribution costs. We live in a deregulated energy market. So we're subject to the market forces that push the utility and distribution causes, costs. And a consistent raise. Raising of costs as well in the increase in the carbon tax. It's currently at forty dollars per tonne at the moment. It'll be fifty dollars per tonne next year. And by twenty thirty, it will be up to a hundred and seventy tons if we stay in the current scheme. So it, combine that with our aging and inefficient equipment, we run into a major risk. For larger runaway costs in our energy infrastructure. And on the maintenance, maintenance side, through my energy audits and thermal scans, I've identified. A significant amount of deficiencies in building envelopes in the town facilities. So that's windows, walls, doors, roofs, et cetera. That is leading to a potential for significant damage in the long term to our. Capital assets that are our buildings as well as increased utility costs, increased operating costs and increased maintenance costs. So what I'd like to introduce is some, some projects that would be major overarching themes. That we could look into that would address these risks, mitigate these risks as well as significantly achieve our emissions reduction goals. For this year, next year and the coming future. So the four projects that I'm just bringing to your attention is a municipal LED lighting retrofit. Weatherproofing and building envelope upgrades, a retrofit of the civic center boiler and controls within the building. And small-scale building automation. So with these four overarching projects, they would. Look at the significant risks that were identified, but they would do it from the fundamental, fundamentals of building science, which is tight envelope. Good heating, ventilation and air control and, and good control on top of that. And these would be data-based, outcome-based projects that would significantly improve our environmental performance. As well as our efficiency in operations and maintenance. So I'm just going to go through. Each of the four projects and give a few points on them, just to bring you guys up to speed and see and to show you what we've been looking at. So with the municipal lighting, LED lighting retrofits, the background of this is the, our current standard and what we have. Is fluorescents, TA fluorescents for the interior, high-pressure sodium for exteriors. But there's, we have no standard for upgrading to LEDs or any sort of process from there on out. Which leads to just a piecemeal sort of implementation in the buildings. So for, for this lighting retrofit, we would look to include all buildings excluding repsol place due to the reasons I mentioned earlier. And we'll be addressing interior and exterior lighting. And. Moving on to the next slide, as. On the emissions direction and budget piece, I just want to bring attention that these are high-level estimates and they require much more information to get a more fleshed out. And more holistic picture of what they are. So more research is needed. These are just for informational and high-level cost estimate purposes. So what this project would do, it would mitigate. Mitigate a lot of risk in terms of utility costs, distribution costs and maintenance costs due to the longer life of the LED lighting. As well, it was, it would bring a standardization in terms of maintenance procedures, in terms of implementation that would. Create a lot of cost, cost-saving exercises. And at a high level for all buildings, we'd be looking at a. About a sixty-four tonne in per year emissions reduction, which is quite significant. And that's coming at a cost of. At, at the low end, about a hundred and fifty thousand a year and estimated savings of about twenty-five. And these do require more information. So the next project would be weatherproofing and building envelope upgrades. So in late February, I mentioned, I performed thermographic scans of all seven buildings. In the portfolio that I'm looking at and it highlighted a lot of areas of. Air infiltration, moisture ingress and significant thermal bridging and gaps in the building envelope. So to address these issues, we look at all buildings that are in the portfolio, all seven of, seven of those that I have, have under me. We focus on windows, walls, exterior doors, heating, ventilation, air conditioning and roofs. To, to give you an example of what I found on this, this, the picture on the left here is in one of the programming rooms in the library. So we can see the ceiling going into the wall and it's just tongue-in-groove pine. What we found was a significant gap around the top of the building. Between the roof and the ceiling. So you can see in the thermal image, there is a significant amount of thermal bridging. There's a significant amount of air coming in. And we also found areas where there was a significant amount of con- condensation and moisture ingress, which potentially runs the risk. Of, of mold, of damage in the walls that could significantly shorten the lifespan of the building. So going through the, going through with this project would mitigate a lot of deficiencies in air tightness and thermal bridging and. Moisture penetration within building envelope and has a, a very good potential to increase the value and lifespan of our town assets. And it, this is a, a difficult project to get costs on. I'm currently in the process of working, working on that. At the very high level. Simply addressing the weather stripping, weather stripping and exterior doors. In these buildings would lead to a forty-three tonne per year emissions reduction, added cost savings of about forty-nine hundred in utilities alone. So there, there is a potential here for, for a good return. Now, to address aging and aging infrastructure. Eight, sorry, aging and inefficient equipment. The civic center boiler is one of the most significant ones that I've found in the portfolio. The current system is what's sixty years old. It's, I believe it's original to the building. And because of its age, it's becoming very difficult to maintain and expensive to operate. Just due to parts in availability, due to its age, as well as unfamiliarity from tradespeople coming in to work on it, since it's not a standardized system. In addition to that, the control system in the building is outdated and ineffective. It. Does not provide us with a good thermal control of the building. We, we can't set a significant amount of programming to save energy. So re- retrofitting this boiler would allow us to save significant energy in the building as well as have better control over it. So we replace it with a high-efficiency unit and with a pneumatics, replace the pneumatic system with a digital system. That would interface well with the current system that's on for the AC in the building. So this has the potential to significantly reduce our energy costs associated with the usage of this aging equipment. As well as reduce maintenance costs due to a brand-new system that tradespeople are more familiar with, parts are more available. And we'd also have increased thermal control in the building, which would lead to significantly increased occupancy comfort. Now, more information is required for this one. At a very high level, we'd be seeing a twenty-six tonne per year. Say, reduction in our greenhouse gas emissions. And as well on, at a low-end cost of a hundred and fifty thousand, at estimated three thousand dollars a year. Now, the three thousand dollars a year is just from natural gas savings alone. That doesn't factor in maintenance or any other operational parameters. Now, the final project that I want to bring up is one that I'm really excited about. I'm huge proponent, proponent of building automation. So in going through the buildings, I found that the majority of buildings, they have, there's minimal automation in terms of programmable thermostats or timers or anything like that. So that gives us limited control on our conditioned spaces. Which is, leads to increased operating costs, increased maintenance costs due to extra wear and tear on equipment that is running when it really doesn't need to be. And most importantly, increased energy use and emissions. So we'd be looking at all buildings within our portfolio, excluding repsol place as, as for the reasons mentioned before. And we'd be focusing on simple measures. So that's pramable thermostats, timers on equipment. Occupancy sensors for lighting and ventilation, those, those sorts of initiatives. So we'll be mitigating a lo- a high amount of risk. For ex, equipment failure from excessive runtime. So it would be significantly less from wear and tear. Which would lead to reduced utility and operating costs as well as reduced maintenance costs. At the low end, we'd be looking at a fifteen thousand dollar investment just for these small-scale applications. Now, more research would be needed to determine what would be the savings and emissions reductions from this process. However. Typically, you can see a seven to fifteen percent reduction in space heating and cooling energy. As well as a fifteen to twenty-five percent reduction in lighting and ventilation energy usage. So there can be significant gains from that. Now, the next steps that we've been looking at are. As I've mentioned quite, quite a few times, would there be more research required to determine the exact costs and benefits and emissions reductions for each project? This, this sort of intersection of en- energy management and asset management is really important here because. I don't see them as two separate issues. If putting, putting effort and resources towards energy management. Has the potential to provide value and potential, potentially improve the lifespan of our current assets. And through that, we can start for the planning, for the phasing in of low-cost projects as plan, as resources allow. Because he, these, these four projects that I've introduced, they're very large-scale, they're very overarching. And there's the potential underneath these to pull out small-scale projects that. Give us the best return for emissions reductions or the best return on investment or the best maintenance savings or operational savings. So we have a lot of options on how we can, how we can look at this and a lot of the lenses we can apply to it. So thank you guys for your attention. I really appreciate the time and you can open up the Florida questions.
Excellent presentation. Thank you very much. Uh, before we get started, can I ask you, Mr. Reom, to send us that presentation because it's not included in our package and I'd love to have a copy of that. Thank you. Um, who would like to begin? Councillor Byron.
Thanks, uh, through the chair to Mr. Reom. Uh, great presentation as well. Um, I certainly appreciated it and I know the library's talked about. Uh, and the board has talked about uh the presentation that you or the, the audit that you did in libraries come up numerous times in our conversations. Um, a couple of questions. So when, when we talk about, uh, I'm certainly um in favor of uh. Looking at these, some of these projects, the LED lighting, I think is great. The library did some of theirs. I don't know how much you included with that because they only, the library only did the library's portion, right? Not the whole building. Um, and the following year on our budget and our utility costs, they went down astronomically. And you know, we, we thought, well, maybe there was a count wrong or something wasn't right. And then we realized it was because of the savings in the LED lighting and. Uh, we were blown away uh with the savings. So um, that was, yeah, we definitely didn't, uh, that was underestimated uh the savings. Um, I think the weatherproofing and building envelope upgrades, um, I think any building that we're. Uh, currently using and intend on using in the next ten years, I think we need to be doing that um for, obviously for the energy savings, but. Um, wh- when you look at this audit, um, do you consider like space heaters that. Staff are putting under their desks and turning on, like I know in my own home, if I use a space heater, I can see my electricity bill go up. Um. Are all of those kind of things considered in there? Or is it just like an overall blanket kind of picture of the building?
Um, through the, through the chair to councillor Byron. Um, when we are doing the building audits, we are looking at every, every aspect of energy use in the building. So. Specifically, you mentioned the space heaters that employers are using. Yes, we are including those as potential areas to look at. And, and we, we are also getting the whole forty thousand foot view of the building on that. So we do hit it from both, both angles. Thank you.
Councillor Shannard.
Hi, through the chair to Brandon. Um. My first question, I'm a little bit confused on here is where you go, the town office boiler system, if you really appreciate it's old. But how are you going to put that on a timer? Boilers, you can't just turn up and down like forced air. So I don't see the savings in a boiler on a timer. If you shut it off. At night, it takes twelve hours to re- recover. Uh, is my first question. Let you respond, then I have one other one for you.
Through the chair to councillor Shannard. Yeah, thank you. That's, that's a very good question. So with the automation in terms of the boiler, it would be setting. It wouldn't, wouldn't be modulating the boiler itself. It'd be modulating the temperature in the, in the space itself. So. We'd be basically changing the speed of the pumps to supply different, different flow rates to the space to provide a different heating load. Which would be less, less load in the boiler, so therefore less natural gas into the building. And then you set that for nightly setbacks and then it recovers itself, say, an hour before people come in. So. The net, the net expense is still less energy than it would be if you just ran it continuously.
Okay, and if, can I do one follow-up question?
Go ahead.
Okay, uh, the other thing that stats is I do appreciate the LED lights, but in some of the older buildings had the old-style lights. They found when they had the cost savings on the lights, but they suddenly realized these lights throw off heat. So some of the big old lights throw off a lot of heat. So you save on one, would you cost on, on the other? Have you factored that in as well?
I'm through the chair to councillor Shannard. Yes, we have factored that into our calculations on this. It's. It is, yeah, it's, it's standard practice for these lighting audits and lighting changeovers to factor heat, heat gains and heat losses into it. And we, we found on that, it's, it's a net benefit regardless to change LEDs, since the price of electricity per unit of energy is about three times. What natural gas is. So there's still the net savings in the end.
Anyone else? Councillor Bevan and then councillor Wilkinson.
Thank you through the chair. Uh, I do like your presentation here and that. I'm glad we're doing something about it because we have talked about it. In the past and now it's coming to the forefront for us. I like the idea where you said, you know, we start on small-scale projects. To start and then work our way forward. And to me, that gives us a better idea. What we're going to be getting into, into all our buildings and that. And I know a lot of our buildings are on the older side.
And I know a lot of our buildings are on the older side and that, and they are leaking, and be more efficiency. I know when we changed the lighting out in our arenas here a number of years ago, there was a difference there. People commented on it. We noticed a difference in our town and that. So I do like the way we're going here, and I like the idea of small-scale working up to, you know, a bigger scale.
Counselor Wilkinson, and then Counselor Curry, and then Counselor Byer.
Through the chair. Thank you very much for your presentation. I found it very interesting. And I really particularly like the interior, exterior lighting changes. I mean, in six and a half years, the profit's going to have paid for the expense, and we're saving sixty-four tonne in emissions. So to me, it's just a win-win. So thank you for presenting. I like all the ideas. Don't know if I like the budget that goes with them, but I like the ideas. Thank you.
Counselor Curry?
Through the chair, Brendan. So were you planning on these for the this year's budget?
Through the chair, I, I was planning on presenting them for this year's budget in, in rollout phases. That we don't tackle them all in one year. There are a phased-out process that we can tackle as resources allow and as schedules allow.
Okay, can I follow up?
Please.
Um, I'll save you, Brendan. Mr. Hamm? Have, has any of this been thought of into your operating, or is this additional to the budget we just passed?
Oh, for some clarity on the project or the, or the, the energy management program, the, the hiring of Brendan happened at a kind of budgetary time, and it was hard to forecast what that, that budget would look like. It has been intended that we would use the energy reserve for some of these projects to move forward. However, that's with counsel's discretion. We just, we, we were like, hoping to bring this in front of you at SPS, but we're getting a packed schedule, so we thought, why not bring it to a committee, have this discussion, and then we can kind of open the floor for those types of opportunities. I think twenty-twenty-one would bring some low-cost potential with, with a long-term capital plan that would support this program for, for the length of the program and beyond.
Can I just, then I would just say, I, and to be clear, Brendan, I had to bring up the budget. I'm in full support. I think these are great. I'm so happy to see us moving these way, moving this way. And I would definitely support us using money out of the energy reserve to implement some of these.
Counselor Byer?
Thanks. Through the chair to, I'm not sure who wants to answer this question. You guys can decide. So mine's also a budgetary question. We just passed our budget. Do we know, or does, do either one of you know what the balance is in our energy reserve?
Through the chair to Counselor Byer. We haven't updated that reserve amount with the adjustment to the, to the budget. So we do not have an exact amount there, and Ms. Bittner is not joining us this evening, so she won't be able to give me an updated cost. But I do believe we were in the three hundred to four hundred thousand range.
Okay, and thanks. And just to follow up on that, do we know of anything else that was intended for the energy reserve budget this year that perhaps we could start this year on maybe some of these projects?
Uh, thank you. Yeah, we have, we've made an attempt to, to kind of create some space around the energy reserve for this program because we believe that this is going to be fruitful in terms of operational cost recovery. So we have, we have with intent tried to maintain a bit of a buffer on the energy reserve for this purpose. So if, if council is interested, we would be coming with a budget adjustment to support these. But we also understand that we just passed a budget, and we don't want to necessarily force this through.
Mayor Zahara?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you so much for the presentation. It's, it certainly highlights the need for more efficiency within our buildings, and our utility costs are over a million dollars for the municipality. So it's a huge area of concern, and we see that the electrical and gas costs continue to increase year after year. So it's really important that we get our heads wrapped around this, to Counselor Byer's point. The energy reserve, I'm just looking back at last week's meeting. The opening balance is four hundred and fifty-eight thousand, however, the franchise fee is coming in this year, minus what we are taking out for the adjustments that we made to our budget. We're looking at around seven hundred thousand dollars in our energy reserve by the end of this year. So we do have some funds available. I'm certainly in support of utilizing that, and especially in some of our buildings that we know are larger in scale, and, and we have no plans on replacing anytime soon, like public works, et cetera. And no doubt, that sixty-year-old boiler at the Civic Center is certainly a huge consumer of energy. So I think we should try to tackle this as quickly as we can, within the capacity that we have and the budgetary constraints that we have, because we are going to save on the operational side. The energy reserves is, is a reserve. It's not, it's not something that's going to impact our budgets. But the savings are certainly going to help our, our operational budgets, which internal help our taxpayers.
Okay, I'll have my two cents. This has always been a high priority for me. Maintenance costs are going up, carbon taxes are going up, the grants are available now. And so I, and, and we have money set aside in energy reserve exactly for this purpose. So I agree, we should be tackling these things as soon as possible. I would comment that I'm not, I don't necessarily agree in principle with reducing your targets when you just find it difficult to meet them. So I would, I would recommend we, we set strong targets and work as hard as we can. And if we, if we don't meet it, we don't meet it, but I don't agree with going the other way. And, and when this does come to perhaps strategic planning, or when we're start talking about dollars, I think it would be important to have some kind of estimate around maintenance cost savings, even if it's just a rough number. I think that could be in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. So I, I think you should try to make some kind of estimate for that. I'm in support of all of these projects. Couple of questions. One, I, I noticed moving towards green energy is not, not being proposed. I'm wondering if that's too high of a ticket item, or it's outside the realm of this project. But moving towards purchasing green electricity or moving one particular building towards solar energy, for instance, the Public Works seems like a good candidate for me, from my point of view. Perhaps, Mr. Reo, you could answer that, that question. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. So it's moving to green energies, specifically solar, solar energy is not specifically outside of the, the realm of this program. We view that as more of a, a value-added sort of proposal where we get the most, we work towards efficiency within the building, and then any green energy that we add on to the building will give us the best bang for our buck when it is added on and after we address issues in the building already. So it, it can be a future consideration, and I would a hundred percent be in agreement and support of that. However, I think there's lower-hanging fruit and much more fruitful emissions reductions implementations that we can follow first.
Okay, thank you very much for that. Second question. Moving from Repsol to a new multiplex, would, would your program give credit for that kind of a move where you're totally demolishing a building and going to a greener, more energy-efficient building? I'm not sure if your program will still be around when, when that building is completed, but I'm hoping Edson still gets credit for that kind of significant capital outlay and moving towards greener initiatives.
Thank you. I don't believe the program will still be running by the time the new multiplex opens. However, if we continue with the energy management as a part of port, the portfolio of the town and as a priority, there's, there's an angle and a lens we can take that it's a, this is our commitment to sustainability within the town, and we can take the lead on marketing that. We can take the lead on showing that to the public and to the province as well. So we can still get credit for that. It just won't be through the, this, this program.
Thank you. And if I could, one more question. And then I think Mr. Hamm just put up his finger. One more question. Out of these capital or out of these cost estimates, what percentage do you think would be eligible for grants?
I'm unable to give an answer on that right now. We'd, we'd have to explore some of the grants that are available at the moment because there's, there's been several that have come out that we're currently investigating, so more information would be required on that.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hamm, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on your first question there, Counselor Sorenson. With the program not like lasting for two years, our intention is to hit as many no-cost, low-cost items in twenty-twenty-one, and then, and then come with a fairly robust capital program that would not, not encompass the length of the program, but other, but encompass the length of our capital program. So the, the, the intention here is to move forward with these projects with the data that we, that we learned from this, from this opportunity. So I'm, I'm hopeful that, you know, the credit that we gain from this is, is greenhouse gas emission reduction and cost reduction. And that, and that's really, I mean, those are the points we're really trying to, to make in, through this program. And, and I feel that Brendan, considering the short time that he's been in with the municipality, he has done an incredible job of, of the reduction already.
I completely agree. And hopefully, before Mr. Reo leaves us, if, if, if ever, he can look at potentially policies and, and procedures where, where green initiatives should be added into the lens so that we're continually improving in, in these matters. And it's not just, we don't need to hire a manager specifically for this in the future. It just becomes automatic. Counselor Wilkinson?
Through the chair. I know the data will be old, but when you talk green energy, my first term on council, I think it was, we had people come and talk about having a solar mini-farm, I guess you'd call it, down at the far end of the airport. And it was just so extremely interesting. It was such a pity that we didn't go with it at that time. But I don't know if that research would be of any help to you or not, but it must be around somewhere. All right, thanks.
All right, is there any other questions or concerns? Mayor Zahara?
Yeah, around, around the same, same topic to Mr. Hamm. I don't know, do we have any programs available for residents in terms of water usage as a part of efficiency? And is that something that we may want to think of considering as well? Considering the costs of drilling new water wells and making sure that our residents have that opportunity to be more efficient as well.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Through the chair, I, I think we have two streams of thought currently happening. One is just communicating water conservation in the town of Edson. You know, most, most neighborhoods don't require lawn watering because we get enough water in town. But furthermore, we're looking at some policy-driven direction. But I don't think that would fall under Brendan's realm at this point, but we are, we are pursuant of, of both those streams.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, oh, Counselor Byer?
Thanks. Through the chair to administration. So if this or some of these projects were brought forward and we were, council was interested in pursuing them through the energy reserve, is it likely that we would see them completed this year or just started? Or what are, what are the thoughts on that kind of a timeline?
Through the chair to Counselor Byer. Yeah, I think that it's very possible for some of these lower-level projects to, to get taken care of this year. And, and, and judging by the response that I'm seeing right now, I think that we'll probably move forward with some of those options and bring them forward to council. I, I really appreciate the support of the program and, and of moving forward with this. It is, it is incredibly nice to see it's, it's, you know, in an industry town and, and an energy town. We're really not pursuing things that necessarily collide with, with the type of industry that we work with, but more in terms of creating some opportunities to move forward on that front. So I'm very excited to work with this, this council and, and get a couple of these projects taken care of.
Okay, we'll move on. Thank you very much, Mr. Reo and Mr. Hamm. Move on to rezoning C three to R one B. Welcome, Ms. Chen.
Good evening, council. Let me just share my screen here. Can everyone see everything okay? Awesome. Just let me minimize this first as well. Okay, so good evening, council. I am here to present a land use reddestinations, also called the rezoning application. As an overview, yes, as an overview, planning had received an application for a land use reddestinations. The subject property is located on four, six, two, nine, four Avenue along Highway sixteen westbound. The applicant is applying to redesignate from the current zoning of Highway Commercial C three to Single Family Residential R one B. So the slide illustrates the difference between the two districts. On the left here is the Highway Commercial C three land use district. It is generally intended to provide for a range of commercial uses to serve the traveling and local public using Highway sixteen. In the Highway Commercial C three land use district, discretionary use lists single-family dwelling in existing at the time of the passage of this bylaw. This here actually ensures that the single-family dwelling that exists prior to the land use bylaw can actually remain, but no modification are allowed. For this specific reddestinations application, the single-family dwelling exists prior to the land use bylaw. So therefore, it actually exists as a non-conforming residential use at a commercial districts. On the right-hand side lists the single-family residential R one B. It is a land use district that is generally intended to establish area for single-detached housing comprising of standard parcels and dwellings. So according to the R one B of the land use bylaw, single-family dwelling is listed as permanent use under this land use district. For more information about the two districts, please refer to the agenda package. So when we are actually speaking of land use reddestinations application, it is important to refer and also ensure that there are actually alignment with the statutory documents. In reviewing the municipal development plan, MDP, the subject area is located within one of the future municipal statutory plans named the Central Commercial Area redevelopment plan. You can actually see that's actually indicated in the red dot on the screen here for the location of where it is actually located in the town. The central commercial are a, sorry, ARP is intended for commercial development. Therefore, the reddestinations application does not align with the municipal development plan, MDP. Also, just for your information, currently, there is an existing single-family dwelling, or we can also call it as a principal building onsite, and it is within its setback distance. In conclusion, the conclusions, the proposed reddestination does not align with the statutory documents, the municipal development plan. Therefore, the planning department does not support this reddestinations. On the slide here, I kind of provides the, some of the alternative options for council. One of them is that administration to proceed and bring this reddestination bylaw for first reading at the next council meeting, or councils could provide other directions to administration. Another items that I want to, um, kind of want to mention and kind of keep in mind is that if council would like this applications to come forward, conforming to the town's statutory documents, it is recommended that the applicant amend the municipal development plan, MDP. The MDP amendments will ensure proper processes is in place. There are consistency between the statutory documents and actually ensures that there are clear direction for future developments within the area. Thank you, and this is my presentation, and we are open to any questions council may have for administration.
Yeah, I'll open the floor. Yeah, I'll open the floor. Any comments or questions? Mayor Zahara?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Ms. Chan, for your presentation. I guess my main question is here is why? Why is the applicant looking for land use re-designation? What are they looking to do at this location? You know, I think I need that detail before I can make an informed choice on whether or not it's something that we want to do.
I will actually, to the Chair, to Mr. Mayor, I would actually defer to Mitch Hamm for the answers.
Thank you, Mayor. So the intended reasoning behind the rezoning is because the applicant is attempting to sell their home as a residential property privately without oversight of a realtor and believes that there's greater value to the residential property as is than there is to a commercial property coming in to try and remove the structure and build something on that site. Yep, that's it.
Counselor Byer?
Thanks, through the Chair to Administration. When this all became about, I don't know what the timeframe was, for the future central commercial area as well as all the, any additional statutory documents that would have labeled this a commercial property rather than residential. And I realize the residential ones that were there were kind of grandfathered in as they are. What kind of, so two questions. What kind of question or what kind of communication happens with the landowners then after kind of that is dealt with? And then my second one was regarding selling of the properties. What information would be given to a potential buyer regarding that if it was bought and sold several times throughout, over the years? Just communication-wise?
Through the Chair to Counselor Byer. So all the statutory documents began to align in 1992. The original land use bylaws from 1962, but we, but the town of Edson administration had begun to give direction to landowners in this particular area around 1992 that going forth that these would be directed towards commercial land use. And so that's when it became not permitted to make changes and whatnot to their buildings. In a lot of ways, we understand that this creates some difficulty for the residents. However, for municipalities to transition to these types of overarching philosophies, there does need to be some long-term change happen here. And unfortunately, this is a type of long-term change that's been going on for 30 years. And administration finds it increasingly difficult to convince landowners that, you know, moving away from this residential model is necessarily good or bad for them. And the CMHC creates difficulty with commercial land use because the 20% down cannot be covered or insured. And so that adds elements of confusion to the process. From a point of administration, we believe that given, you know, the correct amount of, level of effort towards selling as a commercial land use, likely just due to its proximity to all other commercial areas in town, that it seemingly would be a beneficial opportunity for a commercial business to use this space. But that is just not how it's viewed by the applicant at this time. Did I answer your questions?
Just before we go to Counselor Curry, I just want to ask for clarification on something Mr. Hamm said. And correct me if I'm wrong. The ownership of this property can change hands without a change in residence. It doesn't have to go to commercial. It can be sold and reused as a residence. It's only when a significant change to the structure, that's when it has to be changed to a commercial building. Correct, is that correct, Mr. Hamm?
That's absolutely correct. And I think what's driving this rezone application is more to do with the 20% down payment on a mortgage than the change to structure at this point.
Okay, thank you very much. Counselor Curry?
Just two points of clarity here. Through the Chair, one to Ms. Chan. So if this were to, if we were to rezone it, it would just be this one lot amongst all of these lots that would be rezoned, correct?
Um, through the Chair to Counselor Curry, that's correct. But one of the things that we have to keep in mind is that if we do have, happen to have this residential in there, we do have to have the amendments for, kind of amendments for the Municipal Development Plan because that's kind of gives direction and it must actually align with each other.
Perfect, thank you. And can I add one more? Counselor Sorenson, Deputy Mayor Sorenson, sorry. And then my other question is, as far as our commercial, and sorry, just for clarity on what can be there. I know we have a few different commercial buildings that have residential, like housing on top and stuff. Would that be allowed in the current zoning? Because I think like, and I'm not 100% sure if it is residential attached. I know in this location, there is a new facility that's across the way on the highway, a block away, that I think did that.
So through the Chair, there are several discretionary uses for the possibility of suites or, drawn a blank. But there are opportunities for discretionary uses for this type of facility. But the general sense of the discussion here is not to have a business with a security suite. This is the intention of maintaining residential capacity throughout the life of this lot. And it, yeah, it's really difficult, like I said, because I mean, from a perspective of a municipality, you're trying to transition into a commercial sector and not necessarily overly focused on individual development.
Well, I would just say I would not be in support of the rezoning. So I will just say that I would not be in support of the rezoning, just knowing that it is an individual lot and it does change completely. And I do believe we have a municipal plan in there for that. And I also think that as a commercial lot, there is a lot of discretionary use that could be used with it. And I do think that that's something that comes on to the new owner. And if it is sold and the new owner wants to do something with that, that's a different thing that they could be bringing forth to planning. But I think there's a lot of options within the commercial use.
Counselor Sarnard and then Mayor Zahara?
Hi, probably through to Mitch would be the one to answer questions. But understanding is right. The owner wants to sell it to someone else. The new owner, as long as they didn't change the building, they can continue using it as the same purpose. And the only reason they want it resurfaced to residential is for financing purposes, make it commercial. But if someone went in, bought the house, left it as is, they can continue using it the same, in my hearing, not correct?
Correct.
Mayor Zahara?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mr. Hamm and Mandy, for your information on this. I guess I certainly understand the frustration from a property owner perspective when you're trying to move forward in selling a property. But I don't think, I think we're opening ourselves up to a huge can of worms if we start doing this because we're going to have every single property along that way wanting to do something similar. And we're never going to get to that longer-term goal of commercialization along our highway corridor. And if the use can continue to be residential, and this is purely for financial reasons, I don't think that's the role of the municipality in this. So I would not be in favor of moving forward with rezoning, understanding that I certainly would understand the property owner's frustration with this. But really along the highway corridor, we need to be moving towards commercialization of those areas. And there's a lot of commercial properties that are in residential-type housing in various communities. And that's where we need to, we need to go. You don't actually have to redevelop the property to make it commercial. So that's my perspective. I just think we're building ourselves up to a whole can of worms. And then questions raised on other property owners who may have wanted to do the same thing where they were allowed previously. I just don't think that's a good position to put ourselves.
All right, I'll provide my comments. Yeah, I can't oppose this strongly enough. I'm hoping to see, you know, land use bylaw come sooner than later that simplifies our zoning process and def fragments our zoning, our zones. And this works exactly the opposite direction. It fragments and makes future land use decisions much more difficult. If we ever wanted to put in a major, you know, one square block development, it would be impossible with a residence right in the middle of it. This is exact opposite of what I would ever vote for. So thank you. Any other comments or questions? Counselor Byer?
Thanks, through the Chair to Council and Administration. Based on the comments that I've heard and information provided thus far, I'm also not in support of encouraging this to go forward. I think we need to follow our statutory documents and the, what, 30-year plan that we've had in place. I don't want to be opening up a can of worms for this property, although I do understand the frustrations that the financial industry has created and then how that would impact a sale. So I'm certainly empathetic for that. But I don't think it's the right direction to do one change for one property owner because we will have a lineup behind this one for all sorts of other things that would perhaps go against our long-term planning. Thanks.
Counselor Wilkinson?
Through the Chair, thank you, Mandy and Mitch, for the presentation and the explanation. I totally support you in your recommendation that we do not change the zoning. And I am really feeling sorry for the people who are living in this dwelling, but they are able to sell it. So that makes me feel better. Thank you.
Okay, I think Administration has enough information. Okay, we will move on. Thank you very much, Ms. Chan and Mr. Hamm. Moving on to changes to Provincial Household Hazardous Waste Program, ARMA. Welcome, Mr. Thompson.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chair and Mayor and Council. My report covers a funding change that the province seems to be considering regarding the Municipal Household Hazardous Waste Program. The background of our program, we have three steps. We have the collection part of the step, which is the process which is covered by EDRS. We have the hauling and we have the sorting by DBS Environmental. And then finally, we dispose and destruct those materials at Swan Hills. So the change that they're looking to make apparently is disposal could be impacted in 2021 by not allowing us access, not allowing municipal household hazardous waste to enter Swan Hills after the month of May in 2021. And apparently, there may be some changes for the hauling and the processing funding as well in 2022. ARMA has provided an update, and hopefully you've got a copy of that. I've spoken with a number of organizations, including ARMA, and they are looking at other options. They're exploring other options for municipal disposal at this time. I've spoken with DBS Environmental, Alberta Care as well as, and from EDRS has provided us some information as well. The order of magnitude of this change is not exactly known right now because we don't know exactly what those options for disposal would be or what those rates would be. However, EDRS has provided us with some numbers that they've estimated through their sources at about $80,000. Now, I'm not sure again what the exact impact would be. However, what I can advise council is the Executive Director of Alberta Care, Linda McDonald, has a meeting with Alberta Infrastructure's Chief of Staff on the 29th. That's Thursday. And she's assured me that we'll get an update on exactly what the proposal is, what the change is. And we could, I would report those findings as soon as I know more, which would probably be Friday. So that covers my report. Now I'm prepared to take questions or comments, concerns.
Mayor Zahara?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And just to add to Mr. Thompson's report, I've been in contact with AUMA on this as well because we haven't heard anything from AUMA. This is a part of a broader discussion about EPR, which obviously is not going to happen immediately. So there's going to be some lag time between now and then. AUMA is currently drafting a position paper on the EPR program, which will include hazardous waste. So they didn't have any more information from me other than what has been passed along through Mr. Thompson's report and the Edson District Recycling Society. At this point in time, I know that EDRS is not looking for funds at this moment, but something that we need to keep on the radar because there is going to be a gap there by the end of this year. And I do give credit to the recycling depot who have been really working hard to get rid of this material before these new cost structures come in. And they've also been coordinating with Hinton to reduce some of those costs. So that's kind of where we're at at this point. But I definitely think that we need to be lobbying. And this is just another example of backdoor downloading of costs to municipalities and municipal taxpayers, which is very disconcerting.
Any other comments or questions? Counselor Wilkinson and then Counselor Curry?
Through the Chair, I totally agree with our mayor that we need to lobby. Wasn't it just at our last meeting that we heard the government wasn't paying 50% of something and something else they weren't doing? It just continues and continues. And somewhere it has to stop because there are taxpayers as well. So thank you for thinking of that, Mayor, that we will lobby. Thanks.
Counselor Curry next? Go ahead.
Thank you. Just through the Chair, I also agree. I think we really need to advocate and start lobbying because it does feel like every week it's something new. I'm starting to wonder what they're spending our provincial budget on. I just would, to either Mr. Thompson or Mr. Hamm, can you just maybe in preparation where in the budget this would come from? Just, I would prefer that we were ahead of the game thinking, if we're thinking at this point that $15,000 is going to have to come out of the budget, I'd like some thought and, you know, where that could come from ahead of time before December 31st.
It will be done.
All right, Counselor Byer?
Thanks, through the Chair to Council. Sorry, I just got kicked out of the meeting. So I missed, I think the internet's not working so great. So maybe I missed some comments or maybe perhaps my question was answered. I'm definitely in support of some advocacy to the ERP model. I think that it can't go unnoticed that they keep downloading costs on us. So my thoughts are though, you know, with the government, Alberta Infrastructure taking some of these funds away, are there intentions on municipalities just picking that up? Or would they prefer these hazardous wastes just to go into the landfill? Like I'm kind of very concerned about why are they doing that? Like, do they just want municipalities to pay more money and to pass that on to taxpayers because they know that's how that works? Or do they just prefer things to go in the landfill that shouldn't belong there? And I think that's a question that we need to be asking as we're advocating is that if this is their preference, then that really helps us know where this government stands on environmental protection of all of our local lands. So, thanks.
Any comment on that from Administration?
Through the Chair, I look forward to getting an update on Friday from Linda McDonald to find out just exactly what the plan is and what the intention is. I'm confident that she'll be asking all the right questions at that time.
Thank you. Mayor Zahara?
Well, a couple of things, I think. First of all, I don't think the right arm knows what the left arm's doing in this, in these types of situations where Alberta Infrastructure, their concern is not environmental impact. Obviously, with environment and parks, they are. And the way I understand it, they have made some policy changes to ensure that things are not going to be as harsh as originally anticipated. But I think from a government perspective, I don't think they're giving it that lens. I think from a community perspective and a resident perspective, we absolutely cannot allow this stuff to end up in our ditches and our streams. And I think they just think we're going to pick up the tab for this, which is fine if we Which is fine if we had EPR already in place, and some of this can maybe be dealt with appropriately. So. So so I would make that comment. My second comment would be through to Ms. Parsons today is if you can maybe. When when Ms. Bittner's back, I would like a full breakdown of how many costs have been downloaded to municipalities. Since this government has taken office, because it's quite significant, and that includes the revenue that they've taken away. That is now being borne on taxpayers. Our budgets and our tax. Increases would have looked a lot different if it wasn't for these impacts from provincial government, and they're getting away with it. And then blaming, on the other hand, saying that the municipalities are not looking after the budgets appropriately and it's 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 sickening, actually. So. I would like to have those facts, and we need to share that with our public.
Yeah, I couldn't agree more with the mayor. It would be great to have that kind of report. When people start talking to us about tax increases, to have those, that summary at hand would be great. Any more comments or questions on this matter? Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Thompson will move on. Nothing from Corporate Services, Community Protective Services, moving on to a sundry item. Draft temporary seasonal outdoor patio policy.
I'll be carrying this one, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you.
So, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to begin with an apology to council for the tardiness of this policy submission. We do not feel the policy met our strategic. Strategic priorities nor the red tape reduction by the end of day Friday. And felt it prudent to provide a complete document for this discussion. Feel the document before you now meets the requirements that. That meets those requirements while simultaneously meshing with the bylaws and good planning practice. The patio policy before you is intended to give clear direction to the food and beverage commercial businesses that do not currently have. Private property to operate an outdoor patio. By creating a clear policy direction, this will allow businesses to continue to operate at a reduced capacity during the pandemic, while restrictions allow and potentially beyond. So the policy outlines two streams of thought here. The first is intended for allow businesses to just pop up temporary patio systems so that they can. Continue to serve their their customer base in a in a sit down capacity. And the second is to provide some direction for those semi-permanent seasonal structures that would. Go out into the parking spaces in front of their in front of their. Businesses. Again, I've taken a little bit extra time to explain the policy because I realize how late it came out, but ultimately. We think that we we feel very strongly about this this policy that meets both. The direction given by the government a few weeks ago and and also gives us some something to work off of in the future. Just for your note, it is a pilot policy and will will remain open until November first, twenty twenty three, at which point we will reconsider. Either extending the policy or amending the policy in in early twenty twenty four. Any questions?
Counselor Byer and then Mayor Zahera.
Thanks. Through the chair to administration, I was only able to read about two thirds of this policy before the meeting tonight. So how does this? The difference in what we kind of currently have with what the government is allowed for the parking lot patios and sidewalk patios? How does what we currently have kind of just temporarily in place compared to the policy that you brought forward?
So for through the chair to Counselor Byer, the the current system that we have is allowing private. Businesses with the space on their own private property to allow for patio usage, and that that preexists. What this policy encompasses is the opportunity for businesses that do not have their own private space to use public spaces to then. Provide a patio service. So either, like I said, a pop up service where they would have tables and chairs kind of up against the wall. Or a larger kind of semi-permanent structure that would. That would extend out into the parking stalls in front of their business, up to up to two parking stalls in front of their business. To allow for a pedestrian walkway to go around that that sidewalk space and allow them to use the entire sidewalk for. For the this purpose of having a patio.
Mayor Zahera.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mr. Ham, for bringing this forward. I'm in support of doing this. I only I only have two, I guess, general comments would be. What, how do we ensure that those parking spaces in front of those buildings? Are barricaded off for safety reasons if pedestrians are going, need to walk around? What's the town role in that and how can we assist with that? Have, I guess there's three questions. The second question is, have we had any of those businesses, particularly on Main Street restaurants? Approach us looking to do something like this? And third, I'd be in favor of waiving fees for this year. I see there's an application fee. Just with the situation at hand, I think that's the least we can do to help assist those businesses to ensure that they can utilize those spaces. If this continues on into the next year, then then I'm certainly okay with a fee, but for this year, based on the circumstances, I would like to see us waive that.
Excellent. Through the chair. So for your first question, there is some policy direction on how this needs to be managed. We were we were very. We were trying to restrict kind of overlapping policies, so. Like for visibility and and safety, we will, we will be referring to some parts of this policy and some parts of our community guidelines for for that policy, for for people to move forward. And that will come through a guidance. Document that will go along with with those those particular semi-permanent structures. Secondly, we have seen interest from all of the. The businesses that this this policy would pertain to. So there are actually very few businesses in town that this policy actually focuses on, but. We've we've heard from most of them, if not all of them already. And the third question was. If you can remind me.
The the third comment was just to waive the fees for this year based on. The government rules.
Right. Quite honestly, Mayor, the the fee is quite nominal, and and when we when we revisit our fees, we'll 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 make sure that this policy aligns with our. Future fee structure. So this is just currently in alignment with our current fee structure, and we are happy to waive the fee for twenty twenty one.
Counselor Shannard and then Counselor Bevan.
Yes, through the chair, I'm full in full support. I read through most of it, but a question the mayor brought up, we had. A semi temporary patio on Main Street. Have we had any complaints? How did that work down farther? Remember, they had a wooden one, I don't know if it was put up last but year before. So how did that work out? Was there any complaints or was it good, bad, or any feedback on that?
Thank you through the chair to Counselor Shannard. You know, I'll be honest, I'm I'm unaware of that semi-permanent structure that preexisted, but I will look into that. Oh, Ms. Parsons.
Yeah, that would have been the one with sacred grounds. They had put out a temporary. Temporary boardwalk. I'm not aware of any complaints that came in. We did. Have to approach them about putting up some barriers to delineate the patio, I believe, but otherwise I think it went over fairly well.
Counselor Bevan.
Thank you, Chair. No, my question was on sacred grounds where they had built out onto the street and that, and the people had no problem with it. They did put up a railing around it so people could walk around it and that. And looking at what we have downtown area. Air there, there's not a lot of the restaurants down there. They would probably do it. So something like they had where they can back it up and move it out, I think is a good thing. I do support it.
I have a question for Mr. Ham, and then we'll go to Counselor Curry. Is there anything in this bylaw or? Yeah, policy that you would not be comfortable with indefinitely? Is there any clauses in it that really only pertain to COVID provincial restrictions? Or is there, is this, could this, could this be, are you comfortable with all of this indefinitely? Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. The currently I am quite comfortable with this policy as it stands right now to move forward beyond the pandemic. But in these types of situations, we may have a blind spot or two, and so we, the reason why we made it a pilot is is for the purpose of of. Flushing out any any blind spots that we may have with this policy.
Thank you. That that's, I I appreciate the pilot or the expiry date on it for learning purposes as well. Counselor Curry.
Sorry, through the chair, and and I apologize to Mr. Ham. I didn't have time to read through this in detail with the timelines. I was just trying to get clarity here. So like the exemptions to the application process, private commercial businesses that operate. That do not serve alcohol. Like, I'm just looking at these, like, the difference between who does have to apply and who doesn't. I'm just a little confused on that. Can you clarify that for me, please?
Yes, thank you. Through the chair to Counselor Curry. The main intent of the exemptions is for the very temporary based. Patios at like pop up systems that would not be serving alcohol or or any attempt to serve alcohol or of any kind. AGLC is pretty strict on their procedures, so we we're just giving guidance to to the municipal structure, and then we'll leave it to AHS and. Alberta Health Authority and AGLC with with the rest of the direction on how things need to be handled at that point. But we feel that this exemption gives direction to, if you've seen sacred grounds in the last week, they've put out a pop outs. Pop up structures in front of their building that they can take out and in, out in the beginning of the day and at the end of the day, and we feel that that. Would be an exempt type scenario where we would not need to give guidance.
So yeah, if somebody just puts out a couple chairs, brings them in, but if it's something that's permanently there overnight. Okay, thank you.
Counselor Wilkinson.
Through the chair, I totally support this. I was on a patio last weekend, and I loved their advertising BYOB, bring your own blanket. You need it.
I'm in support of this policy as well. Counselor Byer and then Mayor Zahera.
Thanks. Through the chair to administration. I just want to express I'm also in support of the policy as well as waiving the application fee for twenty twenty one of a hundred dollars. Thanks.
Mayor Zahera.
Yeah, through to administration. I guess my concern is, so say if there is a restaurant, say on Main Street that wants to do this. How long are they gonna have to wait before they can start planning to do that? Obviously, this needs to come to council. I don't want to hold out that process. They are really struggling right now, and I want to ensure that. We are setting up up for success. Can we give them guidance? And allow them to start moving in that direction before this comes to council? If not, I would be more than in favor of having a special council meeting to pass this quickly to allow them to do that because they. Currently don't have that opportunity like some of the other. Restaurants in our community that have those private lands available to them. And secondly, if barriers need to be put up, if it's more of a permanent structure, are we? Is that up to the restaurant owner or are we gonna assist with that, considering these are public roadways?
Thank you through the chair. Yeah, Mayor, I think the I think we'll be able to move on this quickly enough into next week where we still have to develop the license of occupation. And so there there are some moving pieces. I think that if we do have. Business owners in on Main Street that are they're looking to move quickly on this. I think by the time the weather turns around again, whether it be winter or summer or whatever we're experiencing right now, that we should be able to to stay ahead of this for for our business owners. And from the safety aspect, we we definitely have considered giving some policy direction on on how these barriers exist. And and how they're how they're highlighted. And so we what we can do is potentially bring a couple options to council next week, and if we if we feel that. It needs, it feels, we feel it needs to be policy driven, then we can make an amendment and and move quickly on it.
Any other comments or questions? Just on the mayor's last comment there, I would not be in support of the town paying for barriers, but I do think we should be very clear on it. All right. Any other comments before we move on? Excellent. Thank you very much, Mr. Ham. Do we have any questions from the media?
Yes, we do. Just one moment. Go ahead, Adrian.
Good evening. Um, my question is regarding the provincial household hazardous waste changes. I understand that there will be more information forthcoming, but just to clarify, so that I know I have it right in my head. There is still partial funding for step one and two, but absolutely no funding for step three. And that fifteen thousand dollar estimate is only the cost for step three? Or is that the cost for step three as well as what is anticipated to be lost in one and two?
Go ahead, Mr. Thompson.
Yes, through the chair, the fifteen thousand is an estimate for the disposal cost. For the remainder of twenty twenty one. From June onward. It may not be that 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 significant though, because EDRS is moving their material out, but you're right. Twenty twenty one, it's only the disposal portion that will impact us. In twenty twenty two, they've talked about moving out, moving some of the other funding out of it. I hope that helps.
Yes, may I have a follow up question?
Go ahead.
And you may or may not know off the top of your head, but do you know how much hazardous waste Edson is currently sending to Swan Hills? Or like that two point two million kilograms, was that just us or was that like Alberta wide?
Okay, so I don't have those numbers.
Okay.
At hand right at the moment, but depending on your deadline. Could you give me a call tomorrow in the morning?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Great. Yep.
Mayor Zahera, you had a follow up?
Yeah, just just to that point, Adrian. So I do know that the buy in from our community on hazardous waste is quite significant. So people like to do the responsible thing in our community, so our costs are probably a little bit higher than than some of the other rural municipalities similar in size. And that's thanks to the the hard work of EDRS and and the education that we have, because we are a very environmentally. Responsible community, but hopefully Mr. Thompson can provide you some details with that. And I'd like to point out too, we just basically heard about this. In the last few weeks. The the impacts on this, which is not conducive to working together with other levels of government. And this is gonna have significant impacts right across the province, not just Edson.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions from public or media?
No further questions at this time, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. We have no in camera sessions. Can I have a motion for adjournment? Counselor Shannard makes that motion. It's not open for debate. All in favor? Motion carried. Thank you very much, everyone.